All right, looks like it's seven o'clock by my watch now, so I will call tonight's planning board meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you all please rise. All right, now if you'd please all bow your heads and pray with me, I'll give the invocation. Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come together here tonight and meet on behalf of the town. We'd like to ask for your blessing over this meeting, and we'd like to ask that you give us guidance and direction in decisions we make tonight. For us, in your name we pray, amen. Okay, item number three is the approval of January 27th, 2025 Planning Board minute, meeting minutes. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review those, and if there, anyone have any corrections? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Hearing no corrections, I make a motion to the minutes be approved.
We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
All second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. All right, regular agenda item, here is that you?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Planning Board, your review and recommendation this evening is text amendment TA 2503, and this is a text amendment to allow government facilities in all zoning districts. And this is a topic we covered at the November 19th joint work session last year, when, Amanda, this was before your time, but the Town Board and Planning Board were all in here, and this is one of the text amendments we were discussing, and got a lot of head nods in favor of allowing all types of government facilities in all zoning districts. So when preparing this text amendment, we found in the Land Development Ordinance, Chapter 5 uses, that government office, public facilities, and public safety facility were all listed in the LDO use table, and each one was slightly different. And our planning staff team felt it would be beneficial to combine all of these into one item to clarify that, and then create consistent use standards, because there were some use standards for government office, and some for public safety facility, and then no use standards listed for public facility. And public facility was added several years ago when the town first started working on the Public Works Facility, and that site is in the Little River Watershed, and so we added to Section 4.2, the watershed overlay items that public facility wasn't allowed use. The proposed changes to Table 5.1 are shown here, so the intent is to combine all the different government-type facilities into one item called Government Facility, and update the use standards, such I'll go through these. So the use standards are found also later on in Chapter 5 after the use table, and when anyone wants to come and develop, including the town wanting to do a government facility, or it could be the Wake County facility, or some other type of government facility, they would follow these use standards when preparing their development plans. So first, characteristics of building, a portion of a building, where administrative record-keeping professional clerical, added public safety here to combine that public safety facility operations and professional services, accessory uses might be place to eat, daycare facilities, health facilities, parking of course, and totally added holding cells within a police station to make the combination of the public safety facility work here, as well as outdoor storage yard to make the Public Works Facility type use fit in here as well. Examples, government offices, courthouses, public works facilities, public safety libraries. And thinking about allowing these facilities in all zoning districts, let's say government office is going to be developed on property zone residential low or residential medium, and what if, what if there are homes adjacent to that piece of property? In the LDO now, the buffer that would be required between residential low and residential low is nothing. So an important thing to add here, we thought was to, a buffer should be required if a government facility is, would be developed on residential property, is next to residential property. And in addition, a government building should be set back far enough away from existing homes, so that's where we came up with the setback at least 100 feet from the property line, and then add a landscape buffer that's at least 25 feet wide, and would create 75% opacity, so there would be a limited few sheds between the two properties. For the public safety facility, since we're combining that with government facility, scratching that, and to eliminate confusion in the definition section of the LDO, Chapter 11, we propose to eliminate public facilities, since we're all calling it government facility, and not adding a definition because it's so well explained in the use standards in Chapter 5. So while the comprehensive plan does not directly address government facilities, without these types of facilities, the goals and the other action items in our comprehensive plan volumes would not be able to be completed. So staff recommend, does, staff does recommend approval of TA 2503 to consolidate and clarify government facilities in our land development ordinance. What questions do you all have?
Anyone have questions for staff?
Yeah, sorry, I was just trying to differentiate between the 100 feet and the 25 feet. Is that by building type, like if it was an office like this, 25, but if it's the Public Works Garage, 100?
The 25 feet is a landscape buffer requirement only. These setbacks would be whatever is in that district unless it's next to a residential district in there. If it's residential next to residential, that extra setback is required. Seems like I'm not explaining that very well.
Either, I'm not listening right, one of the two. I have just, because the section four has got use standard buildings must be set back at least 100 feet of adjacent residential, and then you've just said another setback, so it's 125 feet? And that's just no condition, right, if it's a, you rent space over here in the building next to the houses, you can't because you're not set back?
Far enough if you're a government facility.
It's just an office, right, versus like the Public Works Garage?
Sure, an office, a regular office would have to be on, you know, commercial property or office.
So it's, they would just follow the zone of the commercial, it's not special?
Right, right, right.
I got it.
I think maybe an example of the town center, this will help out, I think, a great deal for the town center complex that's coming, due to the fire station being next to Patsy Young's residence, and then police station will be next to the Perry Street residence, and so on, so I think, I think this is a good thing. And that may help clarify that that would separate the new buildings.
It was the zone, I was thinking like a special zone, why would you, but if you rented a building, it's not, you're just following the commercial.
Donnie, would the 100 feet setback be a problem with the proposed new facilities?
No, we've made provisions for that next to the residents there, on the fire station side, and haven't reviewed the police station in detail, but I'm sure those have been built into, so I wouldn't see that being a problem.
Anyone else have any other questions for staff? All right, any other discussion on this? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion, given it's a further discussion, present. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of TA 2503 because it is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All second. All right, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, that took care of the regular agenda items, on to communications, Planning Director's report?
Thank you, good evening again. So under the Planning Director's report tonight, I wanted to talk with you all for just a moment about the Comprehensive Plan Update Project, it's called Roles Will Reimagine, I think I mentioned it briefly at our last meeting. The consultant for that project recently provided a planned framework and a loose draft of all the background information, and I'd love to share that with you all, to review that and provide comments, if you're open to that. And also, April and I were talking before the meeting, I'm sorry, Mayor Potemski and I were talking before the meeting, and one of the important roles and responsibilities of the Planning Board is to assist and participate in the comprehensive plan, so since we're, we have that going on, I'd love to get you all more involved. So I'll, I can send that out to you, and we can discuss at our next meeting. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you, on to the Town Attorney's report.
I have a revised set, I'll hand these around real quick, of the bylaws and rules of procedure with the changes that we discussed at our last meeting. I just want to run through those changes, generally they are, this is the same thing, same document you saw before, but now has the revisions we, we talked about and you all had requested. I just want to make sure you lay eyes on it and take a look at it, make sure this is addressing as we kind of expected, so. Oh, more. How many more do we need? So under Rule Number 2, Mr. Lawrence, I believe you had asked us to kind of clarify and talk about our roles and powers and duties and that sort of thing, so we went ahead and took what is in the UDO, and we put it in here as well, so it's repeating what's already in the UDO, but kind of spells out exactly what is expected of the Planning Board. So again, that's just taken straight from, from the UDO, it's the same language in what our role is as the Planning Board. Another point of discussion was under Rule Number 6, or I'll let you guys, if you want to review that first page for a second, I'm sorry, I don't mean to rush through it, you want to take a look?
That's good, I appreciate you putting that in there, I think that helps clarify, especially for all the new members too.
Absolutely, yes, what our roles are, yep. For Rule Number 6, we had talked about the written report to the Board of Commissioners, and we had talked about what that process could look like, so the last sentence we've added there, the written report will be prepared by the Planning Department and circulated to the Planning Board members for review and approved by the Chair. So hopefully that kind of takes in what we had talked about, that everybody would get a chance to, if there's a change or a response that needs to be made with that written report that's going to go to the Board of Commissioners, you'd have that opportunity to do so, and then the Chair would sign it before it goes up to the Board of Commissioners. Does that sound okay? Revised language good. And then we had next talk about, talked about down in Rule 8, under Membership, there are a couple of items here, so in Item, Item 3.3, the duration of service, the last sentence, we had talked about what happens when we don't have someone to fill a role, can you take on a third term or an additional term beyond those two terms? And so we revised the language to say at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners, a member may be reappointed for an additional term or terms beyond the initial two successive terms if there are no new qualified applicants for vacancies. I think that's what we were concerned about, making sure that there would be. I think that's what we were concerned about, making sure that there would be an opportunity for others, but in case there is not an opportunity, then we can reappoint someone again to another term. Does that language work? Does that sound good? And then...
Just a quick question. I'm assuming the, the word qualified is defined somewhere in the process for the applicants, right? I mean...
Yes, I mean, yes.
In some way, shape, or form?
Yes.
So it's not totally subjective in that nature?
Correct, yes. Item five, attendance was actually in a rule earlier, and we just relocated it here, the language is still, still the same there for attendance that, and this matches again what's in the, the code already, that, you know, you're expected to be in attendance, and if you miss three consecutive meetings, that could be a reason for you to be removed from your role as a member of the planning board. And then on to rule 13 for the agenda. We had talked about when we're going to receive that agenda as a planning board, so we added in the language to the last sentence there, "A copy of the agenda shall be provided to the planning board members and posted on the town website and available for public inspection at least two full business days before the date of the meeting." So that hopefully will back it up, and the planning department did a great job getting that out early to us last week. So does that, do we feel like that covers it? That gives us that two full days now? Okay. And then just a reminder, as we're doing our motions, we did a great job today, you move to recommend, it's not I make a motion, it's I move to recommend approval or denial or whatever it may be. We had those sheets that I handed out last time that can, you know, be a great tool for a reminder of, of the motions and things that we can make. That was, sorry, that was under part eight on page five. And I think that concludes all of the, the changes we had made. Is there anything that we missed? I think we got all of those items. And then if you guys are at a place where you feel comfortable with these, we can certainly make a motion, have someone could move to adopt these as our rules. Again, remember if they, if we feel like there needs to be a change, that can always be done at a meeting. If you feel like there's something that's not working, we can always go back and change it. We're going to revisit this every year for sure to make sure it's still working the way we want to. But if there are any questions, I think we can get a place to adopt them.
Anyone have any question for Town Attorney or any discussion on these proposed bylaws? Is there a motion for approval of them?
I'll move to recommend we accept the bylaws of rules of procedure as presented.
All right, we have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Onto the next one, other business? Does anyone from staff or the board have any other business?
I forgot something very important.
Okay.
In our audience tonight is the new Assistant Town Manager, Steve Pearson, and I thought it was really nice that he came to observe a meeting this evening.
All right, welcome, thank you.
Welcome to the planning board.
Anything you'd like to say or speak, or just say hi? All right. Good, thank you.
Got to see our first snow then, huh?
All right, anyone else have any other business? All right, on to the last item on the agenda, the floor is open for motion for adjournment.
I'll move re-adjourn.
Have a motion for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
Not quite the right. I move to make a motion with double our, still removal.
Thank you. Wasted a whole bunch of ink, you know, on that pen, so. To apologize.
Keep him busy.